We're gonna.
Let's lead to the fighting of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody.
Oh, man.
All meeting the order, uh, we do have a quorum. And. Do you know if they over there?
No.
Fine. Looking in.
Yeah.
They'll be on board or stuff. Just a minute, I guess. Get it. I will fire it up. Working. Yeah, he got it. Twenty eight. Move it. Try to miss it.
It hasn't fooded yet.
No, it doesn't always food anymore, is it? There you go.
The weekend. Well, it says it's using it, but it's not you. Oh. I start the video, maybe no. There we go.
There.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, we do have a quorum, so I take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes.
So.
For a second. There's a second. Okay. Uh, any discussion? If not, all favor I.
All right.
All right. All right, do you have an agenda? Morning, Rich.
What I've got for you today is, we took quotes about ten weeks ago on some trucks and it took me a little while to go through. All the options and stuff, the way things get ordered anymore, we can't even get what we want when we want it. So we specified in our quote that we were looking for at least. A Cummins engine or a Mack engine with an Allison transmission. And, uh, we got a lot of quotes because some of these, uh, dealers couldn't. Deliver the. Either the engine or the transmission combination we wanted in the timeframe we was looking for. allocations for Allison transmissions, I think are pretty tight, so. Uh, we did get, um. Two manufacturers submit, uh, we had. Truck centers out of, uh, Clear Lake, they quoted a frontliner and a Western Star, um. Don's Truck Sales quoted at Western Star. And Nuss Truck quoted Volvo and, uh, Mack now. We always tell them we're not gonna, we might not take the cheapest one, uh, we'll take what fits our needs the best and. Because we were looking at a Cummins or a Mac with an Allison transmission combination or a Mac. With an Allison, we only had really one, we were looking at, um, other option, you know, like, we were looking to see if the Mac and the M drive would work, but. The M drive is an automated manual. Um, we're a little weary on that, we've had really, really good luck with Allison. Um. Having a Detroit engine and a Detroit transmission, we're not familiar with. Um, price wise, it's only, you know, looking at everything, we think that. Uh, Don's Truck Sales. In Fairbanks is gonna give us the Cummins and the Allison, now, we wanted these trucks by the end of November, I think. Of twenty. Five, it may not happen that way, just because of manufacturing and getting it in the quarter, if we want that. Engine and co- and transmission combination. Uh, maybe two weeks ago, when we first got them, without being able to go through everything, we might have been able to sneak into a quarter or two, um. Build, but we've. But we probably won't, but these trucks are gonna be slated to be paid for in the next fiscal year, so when we budget, we can budget for the costs then. Um, we look back and forth between, and basically, we're just kind of bouncing between. You know, the, the, the truck centers, you know, with the Detroit's, the engine probably wasn't such a big deal, but know nothing about their automated manual transmissions there. With the Allison transmission, you'll look through there on the, on the Don's Truck Sales and. Chassis costs and then diagnostic software, you can look and see that we didn't have diagnostic software on the Macs because we kind of already have that. We paid for it a while ago, but looking at build costs between the Mac and the, and the. Western Star, pretty similar in price, if we would not have to worry about the software package, that would be a little cheaper. Um, looking at some other things too, we, we opted to look at a PTO print, uh, provision on the transmission instead of through the crankshaft. Reason being is, I think, on the Western Star with a, with a crankshaft. Type PTO, they put a hole in the radiator and, and, uh, so there's a hole for the driveshaft to go through, and so it's kind of a special made radiator. If you have issues, I think it's harder to, just to fix those kind of things, so we opted to look at that, so it adds a little bit of cost to go on a PTO, uh, off the transmission. Um, we went with Henderson snow equipment versus the, the hanky like we've been using, taking a quote from, from Chris Steele. Uh, Lake Crystal. Little bit different price, and we'll see how that stuff works too, but kind of getting the same setup. When you look at the, we won't go with the, the, the telescoping post. They've got what they call a harsh R. RL. J one hundred, it's a chassis scissor hoist type system, a little bit faster than the telescoping hoist. And that added some cost, but it also, in the end, there was a reduction in, in the configuration of the longsills in the truck that reduced it, so. Didn't add a lot of cost to what we had, and then we added. A, a three-year warranty on hydraulics versus just the standard one-year warranty on. It'll be a one-year warranty on the snow equipment, and then if we could purchase this, we could get a three-year warranty on the hydraulic system itself. So, looking all in all, Don's Truck Sales also, um, installs Henderson equipment. So we were able to see, there's a, there's a little bit. Better cost than the Henderson equipment that hundred and seventy-two thousand versus a hundred and seventy-seven, because their labor rates might be a little cheaper. So all in all, the combination. Were, you know, were higher than the Western Star from, from Truck Centers, but we, um. We'd have to get the chassis and then send it to. To a Hendor Henderson trucks to get the equipment put on. Um, Mac gave us, you know, a pretty good quote, but with the M drive, if the Allison transmission would have been added, it probably would have been more expensive. Be something we're familiar with, but we just couldn't get the transmission we were looking for. So, all in all, I'm recommending we, we get the, the Western Star with the Cummins and Allison combination. For the three hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, that's. What we're looking at quoting, there might be some things that come up during production, we might have to switch and change a little bit, but I think that's kind of our, our target cost there, we're looking at getting two trucks. And I'll take this to Midland County tomorrow, and we'll talk about it over there too.
Yes, I mean, pair of bids, they're all there.
Yeah, they're not that far.
Getting what you need, what pitch is, is ideal.
Well, you know, we, we, we've gone with Mac for the last few, few truck orders and, and I think that I wanna, you know, look at other options as well, putting all of our eggs in one basket isn't always. The best either, and. To be fair, you know, we might be looking at a little bit cheaper options here with, with a different truck setup, so.
Well, you need our group, what do you need?
Well, I wanna make sure that everybody's on board, cause we'll, we'll budget for it next year, um, and make sure we've got the money and the funding for it, cause they won't show up until. Next year anyway, so.
They're beginning down to commit to them.
Well, okay, so the one thing that Don's Truck Sales will do is. When the chassis show up, they, they get their chassis from Boyer Truck. So when they show up, if we pay for the chassis, when they show up at their lot, they'll give us a thousand dollars off each truck. Which, I said, as long as it's. As long as it's next year's fiscal year, I don't have a problem with that, if we can save a thousand bucks, we'll save a thousand bucks.
Right.
Right.
So, so I guess if we've got. An idea there, we're gonna. Get some forward thinking done and get these things ordered, I can make the order this week, and at least they'll get them in their queue, we might be able to. You know, if they've got some cancellations and some of their other stuff, they'll throw us in the queue a little earlier, so.
That I. Be trying to.
Yeah, I mean.
Keep up a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, I, we, we need to kind of, you know, the, the Sterling's, we can start looking at. Depending on how they are, we can kind of look at, maybe rebuild some of them, I think we kind of talked about it last time about, they're not. They're older version trucks, but they don't have all the computerized stuff, all the deaf, all the other systems, like. If we can keep them running, we might have some pretty decent backup trucks to use.
Yeah.
So. If you guys are okay with that, we'll continue on and move forward with that.
Look, so.
Kind of wrong.
Okay.
I think so. Go ahead, do what you gotta do, like, and then we'll just.
We'll make sure.
Stuff in there.
Yep, yep, so, okay.
Sounds good.
And then, uh, talked with, uh. Jason. We and Kay, and we got some other. Layouts for some stuff, so. He submitted some things, most we talked about at our last meeting, so I think what we've talked about was he's been. Take what I, what we looked at, you know, just start giving us our estimated cost off of what we think this will. He, he configured some of the offices and stuff around in the office building and then. Made the changes in the, in the shop building that we wanted, so with that, he'll give us some numbers here. We'll like, tell you what we need to have for. Any future building. Perfect.
Okay.
Any close to numbers?
Not until he goes through that, and then he'll let us know what the numbers are, um, and then, uh. Guys are working on Spruce, getting that one back opened up. Called the bridge there, and we've got some time yet, we'll look at, the one, the one on Raven isn't closed yet, but it's. It's in dire need of re- of get replaced too, so it's another twin pipe we can put in there, so we can order that and get that stuff coming too.
Are you doing the one over, uh? Three ninety?
That one's getting designed right now.
Dogwood, right, about the bottom of the hill.
Yep.
Or near Dogwood.
Yep, okay, yeah, that one's in design, okay, if you guys. Sign the design agreement here while back.
Cause that's also the same one, uh, that where they're doing that wetland project, right in that area too?
Yes.
Uh, Petersburg and that.
Yeah.
Other guy, uh, Idols came here, whatever, six months ago.
Yes.
With those, so, yeah.
Yeah, that one's in design.
That's probably gotta be, with them doing that wetland there, and. I suppose that could have been more than just a culprit player.
Well, I think on that one. That one.
Oh shit.
Cause it's got DNR ground on each side. We had to get more clearances.
Really?
Okay.
Right. Check it for more than.
Yes, yes. But that one is in, in design, so.
Yeah, they can pull up a, something that needs to be fixed, because it's.
Well, yeah, it's, it's the DOT saying, well, yeah, there's. A lot of clearances we need to get, and sometimes I'm kind of frivolous, but.
People don't understand that, that it's not. That it couldn't be done by now, it's a fact, somebody else is holding it up.
Right.
Not you or the county is holding it up, it's.
That's the bad part, is when they close a bridge. You know, if, if we plan, if we're able to plan ahead, then it's only closed for construction, but when you close a bridge, now you got. Now we gotta get a program, now we gotta find the funding, now we gotta get a design, now we gotta get it built, so.
Nine months or better of.
Oh, it's.
Smoking around to get.
Yeah, it's.
That's, that's speedy, you know.
Well over a year after it's closed to where it's open again, so.
Yeah, right.
So, that's where we're at.
Just people know what we're working on.
Right, yeah.
And we're still working on some of the other smaller ones too, WFKS has quite a few, we're trying to fix a few, but I think we're gonna try to still combine a few. These are all gonna be those TIF ones yet, so I think maybe. With the one we did over here, that was kind of supposed to be a TIF one. So, I mean, we're kind of not trying to knock out that list as best we can.
Good.
Good. All right, any else?
All good.
Yes. Any else, Rich?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, drainage. Now, we've got some work orders today, huh?
Yeah. Uh, BD eleven main K, Ron Davidson. Fulton actually went out there and. Took some pictures and stuff, so.
Yeah, if all the dirt is, is he able to go on here, it sounds like it. Maybe, like, out into the.
Yeah, I did a, I think I did a GPS picture on there, two five, upper picture, and then you can see it's just all washed away.
You see, you look at those?
Yeah, they were on the. On the email.
Yeah.
Big, quite a bit of it washed away, a lot of big holes in there.
Yeah, needs to be fixed.
Yeah, you see, a lot of, there's a lot of dirt right there.
Just needs to be dug out.
Dug out and probably reworked, and then maybe they gotta put a little riprap in there or something.
Let's see.
Just beyond that pipe. Should do something so it doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
My job, that's why, up here.
Big rains.
Did he have anybody in line to do it, or we gotta find someone?
Yes.
Okay, up then.
He had, I guess, asked. Officer Petersons or anybody, it's just over here, it's not.
Very good, yeah.
All right, so is there a motion to approve, uh, BD eleven main K?
What order?
I'll make that one. Yep, on the second. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I.
Uh.
All right, both. Motion carries. And did you already get that, heard before?
So, I sent out the email and called the guys, I did hear back, some questions from Larson's, which I got. Answers, I gave them back those, and then I went ahead. And called Elliot this morning, and he said he did get the email, and I haven't talked to Robnus yet, cause I called him last weekend, I called him this week, but he doesn't have voicemail.
Well.
He didn't answer, but, um. I did send all three of them an email.
Okay.
With the. Big quote.
Twenty eight, yeah, so.
Next Monday.
Yeah, next Monday.
All right.
So hopefully we'll hear back from one of them, three of them, so.
Was Elliot gonna look at that? Fox Culbert?
Yes.
Up north there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually sent Elliot like three different emails about your vision, so that way. I said I didn't want you to get them all mixed up in one, so I sent four emails, but, yeah, he did get them, so.
He's gonna go down and look at, and just take care of that one by hand with down. Uh, west of the ethanol plant?
Oh.
Um, just to see what's going on there, cause I got, winkled and lost thirty-three acres or something like that down there. See if that flat area holds.
Oh, there's a silver ending.
That's what I wonder, if it's just that flattest spot, it's kind of settled in there, and if you gotta clean that. You know, instead of every twenty years, do it every seven, eight years or whatever, just that stretch.
And I told him to look at the curves too, kind of the curve going, the curve down, so.
Twelve, what is it, twelve, fourteen hundred feet or something?
I think it measures about fourteen hundred feet.
Yeah, so.
Just needs to be.
Probably just do the repair on it.
Yep.
So.
Otherwise, that's it.
Okay. You guys doing any for that all?
Good.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
Um, payroll, payroll claims, or motion to approve payroll claims.
Who's it on?
Everybody.
Oh, okay.
Payroll. Got my payroll claim.
Payroll claims, got you, I'll second it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're in there.
Us too, just checking. All right, uh, there's a motion to second, all favor I.
I.
I, both. Here it is. Any reports?
Nope.
Well, folks, payroll eligibility.
Yeah.
Oh, IT guy, Colin Day. Yeah, they'll take the motion to approve Colin. For payroll, when he starts.
Twenty-eight motion.
What's your remarks or second?
I'll say it.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I.
All right.
All right, both. Motion carries.
Hopefully that gets us going in the right direction again. It can still hold a break.
Yeah. Okay, you like the license?
No.
Yeah, both sessions at nine thirty, uh, designation of county inspector. So, it's two agreements. So, we've looked at this a few times, went through our attorney. Says the, an agreement to Joe, or have Snyder and Associates. Uh, duty pipeline inspection services. Boltman make, doing all of our county stuff. We have to do it, state Iowa Utilities Commission says so. So. I think that's our best option.
We get to make the choice, otherwise we keep messing around with somebody to do it for us.
Exactly, so. Is there a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates?
I'll make that a motion.
Yeah.
Sounds like it.
All right, motion is second, uh, any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor I.
All right.
I, both. Okay, motion carries.
That letter, do you wanna do that too, that you're? You're basically, it's basically like an appointment or whatever.
Yep, uh, we've got. Basically a. A letter, a, a letter on our letterhead going to Iowa Utilities Commission and some carbon. Uh, basically appointing the designation of the county inspector, which is Snyder and Associates, so, is there a motion to approve the, uh?
You wanna go on one full motion?
Letter, uh, we'll do.
The appointment?
The. The agreement is separate, so, yeah, okay, so this is just, this is sending this to the Iowa Utilities Commission, a letter saying that we appoint Snyder and Associates.
All they're doing.
Okay, there's a motion on that, they're second.
I'll second it.
Yeah, any discussion? All favor I.
All right.
I, I, both.
Sorry, I'm forgetting technical on you.
That's.
You're all right.
You'll sign that too, that's. Yeah, I'm sure there's signature here somewhere, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have.
What's that? Lot of papers. Feature. Yeah, we are good to go that way. Um. Willing drones, anything?
I called. Brenton to see about, um, getting some. Lights done and some other odds and ends, so we'll see if we get anywhere there.
Good.
Um.
Oh. The seat on the toilet's broke.
Yeah, I haven't.
Okay, it's just, I didn't know if you knew about it or not.
Yeah, well. Who's supposed to put it on then?
Well, I imagine.
That's another question. Huh?
Hire a plumber to put the thing out.
We'll see if.
Do you like having for anything, or, uh, Larson's coming for anything?
Well, they'll start, when, when's the boiler coming on, cause we had people a little.
I know.
It was a little chilly last week.
Okay. Cause I called him, I said, hey, we need to get our boiler fired up.
It's not bad today, but last week it was a little.
Well, as long as they get it running. Run the cycle through, maybe everything's good.
It's gonna cool down again, so probably should get it running if I can get it in.
And I didn't know there was still issues at the clerk of courts office, theirs was blowing, their furnace was blowing cold air.
She said something about that when we were setting up the room last week, I don't know what it was, and when they had their little space heaters on or something.
Yeah, so there were some wires crossed there, so that, that's getting checked on, I haven't heard back on that either, and if the boiler was on. It probably, I, I think it would have been warm air instead of cool air, hopefully, but.
It's.
It was.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, yeah.
They're gonna stay eighty forever.
No, they're gonna check just the boiler, cause maybe our furnace.
So if it hasn't been looked at, they should all be.
They should get checked, all right.
Have you had it checked? Did you have it checked last year?
I think so. It should be checked, well, it's got some because you filter it, and it's always have all this, it just needs to be like that. It just needs to be on a schedule.
That'd be a Larson thing.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, and it's probably, did you mention the treasurer's boiler too?
Yeah, I thought we talked about this last week or the week before, and we'll check them all. We did, we went to the vents, or. We just, um, just wanted to be here when we fire up this one.
Yeah.
So. There's, I think there's already, huh?
Well, I think Jake does that one.
Yeah, cause it was warm the day the guy was here, and it already like ran.
Do you know that, it wouldn't work if you have an annual inspection and things like the heat chambers and all that stuff, I mean, because you never know, and they start going bad, and then you. Also, you got a carbon dioxide issue or something that we don't know about.
Yeah, there's enough smells at the treasurer's office that they don't.
They don't need another one?
No.
So I, I just think they should be annually inspected, that's just.
Just safe.
So when they come to check out the boiler, tell them to bring a seat. Uh, different group.
Oh, different group?
Yeah, boiler guys are, boiler guys are different.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they're gonna do their.
Call for a seat?
They're gonna do a, another weekly thing. Once this boiler gets going, they'll, they'll do a weekly stop. Check. So, they will be here once a week if anything else ever pops up through winter, because they're gonna check that boiler once a week. So, we've got to tell them when it's, when it's running, so.
Yep. Somebody should, cause I know.
The actual boiler people are awesome, will be here when the sink fires up.
I just figured there were other bathrooms, and it's probably not used that much, so. I'm sorry, hope it didn't hurt you.
No, oh, I didn't use it, I just, I'm spotted it, started going out. Good guy. Um. They did get a pump switched out last week. Apple Iowa Water Man, well, I think they're on the other one this week.
Sure.
So. Hopefully we'll be able to, uh. Start filling that tower here soon. You know, they got their communication stuff figured out, with, with the drives and everything, so. They're good. Um. We're back to Melissa.
Um, all I have this week is a, the housing conference planning meeting at Nyakog on Wednesday.
Yeah. Sound easy enough? You have any questions from that though?
No.
Yeah. Thank you for the update. Um, people service, um, I did talk to. Mark last week. So, last year when I applied sludge, Scott Mattson took it. Oh, the sludge out of wastewater plant, um, and for some reason he didn't want it this year. Um, so I think we're gonna talk to Mark's, make sure we be kosher with the, the crop, but we're putting on our hay. That's in the development. We can do that, cause it does not need to be.
Incorporated.
Incorporated, um. So, that's our plan for right now, but I don't know, what's gonna be your neck of the woods? For next year, you know, start reaching out and see if there's anybody that'd be interested, see if we can find like two or three different options, those.
Well, I know David Hengstig took it for a while, and then he didn't take it last year, cause. He had Scott take it, so.
Yeah, and I just don't know, and I, I don't know how these. You know, they get some nitrogen, unless Randy signed with one.
Impossible.
They get some nitrogen out of it, I just don't know how it affects with what they're. Putting on, you know, now they've got. You got that stuff figured out, do you?
I don't know, maybe you can only do it so many years in a row too, I don't really know.
With that, I don't, it's not like it's newer, it's not that strong, so I think. Um.
Cause.
You can continually do it, you do get some value out of it, but it's just, we, it's gotta be land applied somewhere.
I mean, Rutland's got ground around here too.
Brian Nelson's got ground.
Ryan's got ground around there.
Yeah, so.
Would be interested in any of those guys?
It's, uh. It's, I mean, it's only like twenty acres worth of stuff, it's not a lot. Um. So just be one of those things, if. Anybody in that area would be interested, it's free, there's no cost to them, who just need fields to put it on, you know, we pay for the hauling and the. Applying.
Might just be a timing factor, if they can get it on before they wanna work it, most of the days, you probably wanna work it in or something.
Right. And if they're, like, and if, well, they've only been in twenty acres, if you're in an eighty-acre field, they're gonna apply the rest of whatever, and then work it also.
Yeah.
Could be it, but I guess, we'll just have to kind of start asking around out there and see if we can find two or three.
Beautiful.
And it would be, it would be ideal for hay or anything like that, if. Then nobody's gotta fertilize their hay.
Top apply while working with them, it's like, you do, as long as they do a nice job of spreading it, and I think they do, so.
Yeah, as far as I know, it's.
Yeah.
Rare to make complaints, but.
It's fairly liquid, isn't it?
Yeah.
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 Yeah. They want you to dump it out there in a drop pot.
They're there?
After we cleaned it, I mean, before we cleaned it all up, but, yeah.
They, uh. Cause, and they're not putting on it at a heavy rate, cause it depends where they're at, not how they're, after a nitrogen uptake all figures, but. I think they could actually put, be putting on a little heavier, but it's like four thousand gallons an acre or something like that, so it's not. As dry as it is. It's gonna be soaked, soaked around before you even get down to the end of field and turn around, you know? So, yeah.
So dissipate pretty rapidly right now.
So that'll be going on here sometime soon, um, but that's gonna go in our, our development area on that, on that grass and hay, so it'll help.
I could use a little help, that's pretty, pretty short.
Well, it hasn't hardly rained, then it's not the best. So. So I did talk to anybody out in that direction, either of you guys, I guess, just asking.
I can ask Chris, and I can ask Brian.
If they got twenty acres that they'd be able to. Let us put this on, it's, and they can, peoples will give them the number because they have to know what's in it for nitrogen. When it's applied, so they'll have an idea of what it's, the value of it is, so they're not over nitrogen, putting too much on when we add that, you know? So. Okay, uh, department head discussion.
Anyone?
Um, my one new guy, he, it's a weird story, but. His eyesight on uncorrected vision was not under by Iowa code, it's supposed to be under twenty one hundred. His was slightly higher, um, we couldn't get a waiver on it, even though he's certified already in South Dakota. So on his own, he went in and had laser surgery on Saturday, and. He will be twenty twenty and able to start by the end of the week, so we just had to push things back.
Well. Well, that's good. Guess it worked out? Um, this is eligible for lasers to get that corrected then.
Yeah, he went in and within three days I had him ended the surgery and I talked, he texted me yesterday and said things are going good, so. We'll sign off on him this week, so.
Does he live here now?
Um, he's got a place in Manly, but he's not up here yet.
Just rent.
Yes.
Cool. Yeah, any other department heads?
Voting started on Wednesday, last Wednesday.
That's a D and, in person, right?
Yeah, in person started Wednesday, and we mailed out all the absentees requests that have come through. There are over three hundred of them that were mailed out.
Well, pretty good day for a little, Kelly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, the other department heads?
Supervisor Weekly, Enos. Uh, well, we all had Winworth Beth Co with executive board meeting. And, uh, I had the advisory board meeting, we visited Astmas. In rake, and that is unbelievable, I didn't realize that was sitting there.
You didn't?
No, I knew it was, I knew that was over there, but I'd never seen it before.
Way bigger than it used to be, I've been there for years now, but.
You walk in that building, it looks like a building in downtown Des Moines, it's unbelievable. So that was quite a deal there, um, then I had North Iowa Children's Alliance, and there, we brainstormed a lot on. Our ECI funds were to spend the rest of our money, and even withholding back twenty five percent. We decided in January to take our director from part time to full time, to go from twenty six to forty hours. And, uh. That she can do more things for us then. And, uh, wasn't, it was only like fifteen thousand dollars more a year, which, because she was contracted before, she had a high. It's a lower wage per hour now than what it was before, because she was contracted before. So we did that, and then we decided to fund the rest of, uh, the transportation for. Head start, and then the other thing we're looking at is childcare wage enhancement. Which would affect Ancoch and Worth, because Sarah Boros got their own, they did it a year ago here. Where they enhance the childcare workers with wages. So we did look at that, and that was about it, but we spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out where to spend the rest of these funds.
It's weird how that's a problem, isn't it? You know, you just run into that very often, too much money to get rid of, but.
Haven't been spending it.
Yeah, well, and it's art of stuff that wasn't above and beyond or what everybody else, you know, what normally is, so.
But, yeah, that was it for me the last week.
Just one more pack up, that's all I had, so, so then listening on the phone to you guys, basically listening and. Turned in a little bit, but it sounded like we. The other two weren't there, so it wasn't many much.
Yeah, it was pretty quiet, just us and Terry and me and Fox.
That place that we visit, that we turned was pretty neat.
Yeah, I did.
I didn't realize we were building stuff for restaurants and stuff over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they've got some, uh, national chain contracts, they got their stuff goes all over the US.
Good little business over there, it's been there for years.
They say, oh, they're doing stuff for Olive Garden over there, they do a lot for Buffalo Wild Wings, and they've got some others, they said it's actually going really good.
There's about ten or twelve of them on that list.
Yeah. So, so, kinda interesting, that little place in Lake Mills, those, that kinda. Um, I had, uh. Winworth Beth Co also, but, uh, had Nyah Cog on Wednesday, and, um, everything's looking pretty good down there. Um, other than we're having, they've got geothermal. And they did that building and having some issues there. Um, they think it's a controller, but it also could be the pumps. Combination of both, but it's a tune of about a hundred and sixty some thousand dollars, which. They're not a hundred and sixty, a hundred and thirty, which makes the city splits half of the building cost with, uh, because they house all their buses. So, uh, kind of unexpected, they were actually gonna try to budget for some upgrades next year. But didn't make it that far, so it's kind of in the budget that we're already in, makes the cities, not do the same thing we are, just. Find the money somewhere and make it work, but of course, uh, there's no heat, so we've gotta get that figured out, cause it's that time of year, so. Other than that, everything's running pretty well normal down there, so. Going pretty good, a lot of grants, they're doing a ton of grants in and out of there, and they've actually got. Uh, some more possibly coming down the line that may add another employee. Um, because, and which is good, because if they get these couple grants coming down the line. Uh, there'd be four to five years where the wages in that, and then there's a few people that are looking at retiring in the next four to five years, so it's kind of a. It'll cover the wages, but then work transition into some retiring people, uh, going out of there, so. Going pretty good otherwise, so. Morning.
Hey, good morning.
Morning. Alright, is there anything else for next week's agenda? Any else coming up?
So.
Yeah. Um, if not, I'm going to recess this meeting until we go into our closed session. Uh, regarding our ruling with worthwhile, so we are recessed for now.
We got a guy coming up next Monday, right?
Oh, let's give him a week at least.
Okay, yeah, we back in?
I hope so.
Yeah, um, I will reconvene our regular meeting. Um, it appears our agenda has been fulfilled, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, so sorry, huh?
All in favor, I.
I.
I, meeting is adjourned.
Alright, guys, thanks.
Thank you.